Yes.
What's that?
Okay, I'm looking.
Where are you starting?
Yeah.
Longer than you've been along?
I know, I know.
Took the words right out of my mouth. Civic leaders. For the first time ever, I can say that about two of these guys.
Our oldest. You gotta make that comment. You and I are the only ones.
Good morning, everyone. Welcome to our regularly scheduled board meeting this morning. If you please join me standing for the flag salute and remain standing for a moment of silence. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. We have a very special thing to start off with this morning here today. It's the recognition of Tulare County firefighters. And I like that it says, "For not years of service, but for decades of public service." And it's a very special time, and I'm very, very pleased that we're able to do that this morning. Chief, do you want to get us started?
Good morning, members of the board. Chairman Worthley, Steve Sunderland, Tulare County Fire Chief. It is a great occasion today that we recognize firefighters. It's a great occasion every day, in my perspective, that we recognize firefighters. Those that come before you today all have in excess of 25 years of service to the county fire department. In our past, we did not do a very good job of recognizing our firefighters, inasmuch that they were volunteers, paid call firefighters. In fact, we struggled in our current administration a little bit on just how we were going to go about this because of their extra-help nature. But we have come to rest on an acceptable process and practice, and this is just but the first phase. We've probably got a couple hundred more out there that we need to recognize. But we didn't think we'd want to flood the chambers all at once today and occupy your whole day with the awards. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
And we'll begin.
And I'll give a little bit of explanation of how we're doing this and who's receiving what and why. There are, in each of our districts, members we want to recognize. And I want to give each board member an opportunity to actually present the plaques or proclamations to the respective people. Because of that, rather than go through each one in terms of years of service, they'll be grouped by districts. And we are giving, this morning, we're giving plaques to those who have served 25 years and more and are retired. And the key word there, I think, is retirement on the plaques. Certificates are to those who have served 35 years or more and are still active. Proclamation to those who have served 50-plus years and are still active. And proclamation and plaques go to those who have served 50-plus years and are retired. So that's kind of how we decided to do it. And we're just so grateful that so many of you could be here today and we could recognize you. And I believe that in the 12 years I've been on the board, that this is the first time we've actually done anything to recognize our volunteers. So I'm just very, very grateful that we're doing it today. So we'll begin with District One. Mr. Rashida will be presenting the plaques and calling you up by name. Thank you very much for being here this morning.
Mr. Chairman, I might add that the fire department also has an award to present. We have acquired gold-tone belt buckles for those with 50 years. They are Tulare County Fire Department belt buckle. And we have a silver-tone belt buckle for those in recognition of 25 years.
Very good. Thank you. I'm sure that's within your budget.
Mr. Chair, he said gold-toned.
Well, welcome today. I think it is a great day that we finally got around to recognizing the backbone of the Tulare County Fire Department. Today, I'd like to start with Mike Shear from Exeter with 37 years of service. And I know, Mike, over the years, fire's been in his blood for a long time. And we certainly appreciate all the years that you've given to us, Mike. Mike receives the county seal, which is the highest recognition that the county gives out. This is something that we reserve for people who have served at least 25 years and have retired. So I'd like to present this to Mike. And our chief would like to give you a belt buckle. The next presentation is to Carl Corley. And he does not get a plaque, county seal, because he's still active. And Carl's served over 50 years as a paid-call firefighter. He started at the age of 17 in Tulare. And after 19 years with the fire service in Tulare, he transferred to Exeter. And there are many times, I know that all of you in here that are familiar with the fire department, that they've missed a lot of holidays, a lot of family gatherings, and they have a lot of support from their families. So Joan, would you mind coming up here, too? I think this is a joint presentation because I know what she had to put up with. But thank you very much for your service and your continued service. And 50 years is quite a milestone. That's twice Pete's age.
Thank you, Supervisor Rashida. And next, we will go to District Two. Mr. Vanderpoel.
Well, I get to come down here, and I'm really excited and proud of my firefighters in my district because between the three of them, they're being honored today. We have 120 years of service, and that's more than all the other districts. So it's always nice to be proud of your district for that reason. First of all, I'd like to start with a couple of recipients from Alpa. And both of them have been serving longer than I've been alive. And I didn't even have to make the age comment. Alan did it for me. So I'll go ahead and start with Mike Hines of Alpa, who has served for 36 years. Mike?
My congratulations. Thank you so much for your service.
Okay, next, we have Pat Hines of Alpa. And he is being recognized for 38 years of service to the county fire department. And Mike, I'm sorry, Pat, would you please come forward? Now, really, for those of you who don't understand, so many of our fire stations only run because of the volunteers, the volunteer firefighters. And I know that we've recently had to close one station in my district due to lack of volunteerism. So it's very special to be able to recognize those who have served for so long and so loyally, keeping these fire stations open throughout the county. So I just wanted to make mention of that, too. And my final award recipient is Joe Bailey of Pixley. And he's being recognized for 46 years. Now, Joe, I think this is the first time that I've ever been able to say that you're being recognized for years of service that are longer than my parents have even been alive. So congratulations.
And now District Three Supervisor Phil Cox will be presenting.
Well, I have three individuals who have spent quite some time in service. And before I call Bill up here, I want to take just a real quick second and let you know how proud I am of the service that you do render. I know what you do. I'm very fortunate to have a son who is one of the paid-call firefighters with Tulare County. And I don't know that many people know that you get those calls at 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock in the morning to go assist with not only a fire, a potential fire, but medical aid calls and the ever-dreaded traffic accident where sometimes you have to deal with very unfortunate situations and tragedy. So we do appreciate the hard work that you do, and we know that it is very demanding. So thank you all for what you do. And I think this is a recognition that is very deserving. And I'm not going to say long overdue because we're doing it, but very deserving. And thank you for all of your service. So, Bill Bennett, would you come up, please? Bill is one of our retired paid-call firefighters with 25 years of service. Next, with 35 years of service, still active Gerald Lindsey. And finally, from District Three, with 45 years of service, and I can't quite say as long as I've been alive, but 45 years of service, Richard White.
And now presenting for District Five, Mr. Ennis.
Well, we all know how important that volunteers are, especially in my district. I have a lot of mountain communities as well as the people down the valley floor. And without those volunteers, the job just wouldn't get done. So very, very proud of the volunteers and all the work they do on a daily basis and the support they give to our firefighters out there. So it's great. I'd like to call Mark Hillman from Springville up. 36 years and still active. Appreciate all you do and very proud of you. Thank you.
And we say the best for last, District Four, so I'll be right down.
I have a couple of editorial comments. First is that Pete may have had the most years, but I had the most years, the second-most years was 115, but it took only two men to do that, not three. The other thing is that we often make a joke about Pete and his age and how we reward people and comment on people and how much older they are than he. It's very rare that I have that opportunity, and today I do, so I'm going to take it. One of our recipients today is, has been a volunteer longer than I have been alive. And the other one's darned close, so I just wanted to say that. I'd like to start with Mr. Bill Swanson. Bill, could you come forward, please? The other thing is that we often comment on people saying, "Well, they must have started really young." I mean, to still be active at this, you know, and with so many years of service. But in this case, it's really true because Bill began his 54-year firefighting career at the age of 15. And he's married to Sandra Giannini. They got married in 1960, and she's been a very faithful firefighter's wife. In fact, during their prom night, Bill and Sandra responded to a grass fire where Bill extinguished fence posts in his formal clothes while Sandra waited for him in the car. And I've heard some real excuses for getting your date out in the car, but that really does take the cake. And Bill also has a grandson, Nick Thiessen, who's following in his footsteps and is himself a firefighter at the Kings River Station where Bill serves us. So Bill, on behalf of Tulare County, I would just want to say, and he's still an active member, so he's not getting a plaque today because Bill has served 54 years, but he's not done yet. So today, we're giving him a proclamation, and sometime in the distant future, I hope we'll be able to honor him with a plaque as well. Bill, thank you so much for years of service. Now, this next person I have known all of my life. And to say that he is a character would be the understatement of the year. Anybody who knows William, I'm sorry, Charles Bud Barnes, I mean, I never knew his first name because he's always been Bud to me, knows that he is a character of the first order. And his son did not fall far from the tree. And they're both here this morning, and perhaps they'd like to come up. Bud, can you come on up, join us? Bud has, we're going to honor Bud for 61 years of volunteer service. And reluctantly, he's now retired. Bud has quite a history as well. Goes back, he got a little bit later start than Bill did. He was 16 when he began. And in between there, he took 14 months off to serve his country during World War II. He's a founding member of the Tulare County Volunteer Fire Chiefs Association. And it is a great honor for me to be able to present this proclamation and this plaque, the seal of Tulare County, to Bud Barnes, a personal friend and a person whom I have always admired and respected for his service to his community. Bud, congratulations. I think Bud's buckle needed a couple diamonds in it.
And his son Bob, who just came up, I just asked him, he has 30 years of service. He's got a ways to go to catch up with his dad, but I have no doubt that he will. I think we should give one more round of applause to all of our volunteers. You're welcome to stay with us for the rest of the meeting. But if you need to get away and move on to fighting fires or other important things, you're certainly welcome to leave us at this time. And at this time, we will be taking up our public comment period. Anyone wishing to address the board on matters that are under our jurisdiction but not on today's agenda are invited to come forward at this time. Please give us your name and address during this public comment period. Seeing and no one come forward, we will move on to the Board of Supervisors matters. And we'll begin with Mr. Ennis on the far right. And I guess I will begin before you make your comments by saying, "Congratulations, Mr. Ennis, on your successful campaign." I know that we're waiting for the final votes to be tallied, but it appears that you will have won your election, and congratulations to you.
Thank you, thank you. I appreciate that very much. I really don't have a whole lot to say this morning, but I would like, I have some of the young people that's in my Leadership Porterville class. Would they please stand? Pretty proud of these people. Thank you so much for what you do. And I'll be seeing you guys on Thursday, right? Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, very good. Mr. Rashida?
Last month, I went on a tour of the delta on floods and levees. And I met someone from the Corps of Engineers, and we had a long conversation, Army Corps of Engineers, about flood protection on Fraser, Strathmore Creek, and White River. Several years ago, the Board of Supervisors lobbied the state of California and the federal government to secure funds for further study and hopefully implementation of some flood control structures to protect the towns of Strathmore and Earlymark. And because of that lobbying, we were able to get funding for the studies, partially from the state and the federal government. And today, the Corps of Engineers are on White River looking at how they control the flooding situation on that river. Tomorrow, they'll be looking at Fraser Creek and Strathmore Creek. The one thing that the Corps probably has changed its attitude a little bit is that before, all this, before, we had several previous studies, but they always tried to channel the floodwater through communities or downstream. And I believe now they have the attitude, it's probably better to retain as much of that water as you can in the foothills before it causes a problem to populated areas. And I think the other change they've made is that before, federal dollars always entailed public access. If they spent federal dollars on private lands, they wanted public access to those waters. Now, I believe they've come to the realization that it's not quite feasible and that the landowners who put these structures up for flood control will not have the burden of public access. So I'm very encouraged that the Corps is in Tulare County today. And hopefully, we can get closer to actually building some structures that'll make a difference in Tulare County. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Cox?
Last Friday, I attended the Leadership Visaya graduation on behalf of the board. They handed out certificates. It's interesting to see that there were members from all over that county that actually do attend that because they work in Visaya. They qualify to attend that group. Very good group of individuals. There are approximately 20 who graduated. Among them was one of our aides, Jeff Forbes. And it was great to see the new baby as well. It was a very, a very good event, though. And it's exciting to see how these folks move through that program and how they progress from when they start until they graduate. So very good program, and I'm glad the board was supportive of having our, one of our aides, Jeff, attend that class. And Jed Chernobivoff will be attending that class next season, starting in, I believe, August.
Thank you. Mr. Vanderpoel?
Just real quick, I, too, would like to congratulate Supervisor Ennis on the apparent victory in his election. And hopefully, when the votes are tallied and finalized, that will still hold true. I'm sure they will. But congratulations and look forward to working with you over the next few years. And then the only other thing that I wanted to mention was tomorrow will be the, if anyone knows Jerry Magoo, not 100% sure, but tomorrow will be his last General Tulare Improvement Program meeting. And he's been with that organization for a very long time. And he was actually a supervisor for two years. So we'll be attending that breakfast tomorrow morning. So very sad to see him go, but wish him the best in his retirement.
Thank you. The only thing I want to report on was that last week, we had a lengthy conference call at CSAC with various members and staff people regarding the Williams-Schumacher subvention, efforts being made to try to restore that subvention from the state of California, which in our case amounts to about $3.4 million, general fund dollars. There was some information requested, and I requested our staff step up and provide that information, primarily from the Resource Management Agency. And they're looking for, trying to figure out ways to identify revenue streams that could help fund the subvention. In my mind, the most important one would be the early cancellation fees. Because right now, when there's an early cancellation of a Williams-Schumacher contract, those fees, which are predicated upon 12% of the fair market value of the property, go directly to the state of California, first to fund the department of, that runs the Williams-Schumacher contracts, and then into the general fund. And it was fine, while the state was subventing to the tune of $35 million a year to the various counties for their programs, that they would receive those early termination fees. But given the fact they've quit sending any money back to the counties, it would seem appropriate that whatever dollars do accumulate in that fashion would be allocated, specifically set aside for purposes of helping to fund the subvention. So that was a lengthy conversation. Information will be forthcoming. Obviously, this is a very tough year financially. The state of California, they're looking at somewhere around a $20 billion hole. So it'll be an uphill battle to try to restore those, the funding to, back to the counties. But we will give it our very best effort. That's all I have to report this morning. And so we'll move on to our And so we'll move on to our agenda, the consent calendar, items seven through eight, 38. Item number eight will be pulled for no action this morning. And item 17 is going to be pulled for separate discussion. Are there other items that members wish to handle separately? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move, I'll second that motion.
We have a motion by Mr. Cox.
Less items eight and 17.
Seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Good morning, Carol.
Carol, would you pull the microphone around?
Is that better?
That's much better, thank you.
Carol Pytling, Senior Administrative Analyst for the County Administration Office. The Tulare County Association of Governments, or TCAG, was established in May of 1971 by a Joint Powers Agreement, or JPA, among the eight cities and the county. TCAG is responsible for overseeing and planning transportation-related projects from a countywide or multi-jurisdictional perspective. Approval of amendments to the Joint Powers Agreement must be approved by all nine members. On April 13th, your board approved Resolution 2010-0285, which would have amended the Joint Powers Agreement to include three changes. One was to allow TCAG to provide staffing services for the Tulare County Local Agency Formation Commission, which is currently being staffed by the county's Resource Management Agency. A second amendment would allow TCAG to operate van pool services on a countywide basis. And the third amendment was to allow TCAG to acquire, maintain, and dispose of real On April 19th, meeting of TCAG, it was determined that the first two items, staffing services for LAFCO and the van pool services, were approved unanimously by all nine entities. However, the proposed amendment on the acquisition and disposition of real property was not. So we've come back to the board today with a second proposed Joint Powers Agreement, incorporating the two unanimously approved revisions, but not including the acquisition and disposition of real property. On the agenda item as published, there were four requests. At this time, items two and three, which were additional amendments to the Joint Powers Agreement, have been sent by the TCAG Board of Directors back to a subcommittee for further review and will require no action at this time by our board. So we're looking now for action on item one, which is approval of the Joint Powers Agreement, including the two unanimously approved amendments. And item four, and we would like to revise item four to include the words authorize the chairman to, to precede the word execute, so that it reads authorize the chairman to execute 10 originals of the Joint Powers Agreement, et cetera. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Thank you, Carol. Entertained a motion?
I'll move approval. Second.
Motion by Mr. Vanderpoel, seconded by Mr. Cox. Please cast your votes, and the votes are unanimous. Thank you for that. And we are past 9:30, so we'll take up our timed items. First item is number four, a public hearing, a request from the Resource Management Agency to certify that as reviewed and considered, the information contained in the mitigated negative declaration for proposed change of zone, number PZ-08-011. Good morning.
Dana Metlin with the Resource Management Agency. This morning, I bring before your board a request for a change of zone from the C2SC, general commercial scenic corridor to the C3SCSR, service commercial, scenic corridor, site review combining, on a 1.29 acre parcel. The property is located on the south side of Avenue 295, which is Noble Avenue, and approximately 1,300 feet east of the city of Visalia. The project site is located inside the urban area boundary and the urban development boundary of the city of Visalia. The land use designation for the site is service commercial, light industrial, and the request has been found to be compatible with the general plan and the established land uses in the surrounding area, and is consistent with overall county development strategies, plans, and policies. The applicant, Mr. Santian, is requesting the change of zone in order to correct violation and allow the continued use of the property for his concrete business. The project site is being utilized for the bulk storage of sand and other raw materials for the manufacture of concrete. And also for the storage of cement mixing trucks. The existing C2 zone is primarily intended for retail stores and businesses, which is why Mr. Santian received the violation. The proposed C3 zone is intended for wholesale establishments, which will include the contractor's storage yard. And the C3 zone, if approved, the violation that is currently on the property will be Here is a map illustrating the zone districts for the surrounding area. The colors that are green and pink highlight those areas where the C3 zone currently exists. As you can see, the brown is the C2. And apricot is AE20. Public hearings were held and an opportunity for public testimony was provided at regular meetings of the Planning Commission on November 4, 2009, December 16, 2009, and February 24, 2010. At those meetings, adjacent property owners and the city of Visalia expressed their concerns and opposition with regard to the proposal. The adjacent property owners had several concerns with regard to the sand that originates at the subject site. One, they were concerned about the roadside storm drain that backed up and caused flooding. Also, as to whether the applicant had permits from the air district. And they were concerned about fugitive dust and the accumulation of sand along the roadside and its impact to traffic safety. Their first concern was with regard to a storm drain that is maintained by Caltrans and is located adjacent to Avenue 295 on the south side. The information that was presented to the Planning Commission claimed that sand was spilling off the trucks as they drove along the roadway, and it had accumulated to such an extent that the drain backed up and caused flooding. After contacting Caltrans, staff was informed that the subject drain was not utilized for funneling water off of Avenue 295, but for funneling water off of SR 198. The Caltrans employee emphasized the fact that the purpose of the drain was for the outflow of water and not for the inflow. The second concern was with regard to whether or not the subject site was permitted by the air district. On December 9, 2009, staff received copies of two permits issued by the SJVAPCD, San Joaquin Valley Air Pollution Control District, to San Joaquin Gunite, which is the name of the business that Mr. Santian owns. The authority to construct permit is required when a person uses a contrivance, which may cause the issuance of air contaminants. And the permit to operate is written permission to operate the aforementioned contrivance. The permit is valid through August 31, 2014. The equipment permitted for use by the air district is a 60-ton cement storage silo served by a Belgrade Bell-style dust collector baghouse. These silos are utilized for the storage of Portland cement, fly ash, and calcium. The final concern expressed by the adjacent property owners was about the accumulation of sand and dust at the project site and along the roadway. An inspector for the air district visited the site on November 5, 2009, and noted no activity and no violations. The existing permit for the silos that was issued by the air district includes requirements that best management practices be incorporated into the project, which would include fugitive dust control measures. A mitigation and monitoring reporting plan has been incorporated into the project for air quality and dust control. The first mitigation measure will require that bulk materials be stored on an impermeable surface surrounded by a three-sided structure with a height at least equal to the height of the materials being stored. This containment system will help confine materials to the subject site. Also, a building permit will be required for that structure. The second mitigation measure will require asphalt paving be installed at the intersection with the road surface and that it have a width of 20 feet and extend a distance of 25 feet sloping into the site. Also, a trackout control device shall be installed immediately adjacent to the public paved surface, similar to the picture illustrated. This will prevent vehicles that are exiting the site from carrying any debris that has accumulated on the tires out onto the county road system. The third mitigation measure will require that any visible trackout on the paved public road where vehicles enter and exit the work area be removed at the end of the workday or at least one time per day when business is being conducted at the site. The county's environmental officer has determined that the implementation of these mitigation measures has adequately addressed the concerns of the adjacent property owners. A representative for the city of Visalia appeared at the February 24, 2010, meeting of the Planning Commission and voiced his opposition to the proposal. The city contends that the existing use is more accurately described as a concrete batch plant, which is a use that would not be compatible with the current land use designation or zoning, and recommended the commission deny the request for a change of zone. The county has determined that the operation is a dry mix plant for the storage of raw materials only, and that there is no batching taking place on the subject site. Therefore, the proposed use is compatible with the land use designation of service commercial, light industrial, and the proposed C3 zone. Secondly, the urban boundaries element, policy four, states that the county may consider proposals for urban development within urban development areas adjacent to cities if the adjacent city does not consent to annex the property for development purposes. Correspondence from the city of Visalia indicated that assuming jurisdiction and annexation authority for the proposal at this time is impractical. Finally, I want to mention that staff received late correspondence, only yesterday, from the city of Visalia, urging your board to deny this project. And I believe that you have received copies of that correspondence. Staff is recommending two options. Hopefully, you'll take one. If the public testimony, if public testimony is provided during the public comment portion of the public hearing, staff is recommending that your board take option number one and close the public comment portion and continue the public hearing to July 13, 2010, in order for staff to prepare a revised resolution of findings pursuant to section 1094.6 of the California Code of Civil Procedure. Or if there is not any public testimony during the public comment portion of the public hearing, staff is recommending your board take option number two and close the public comment portion and close the public hearing and direct staff to return on July 13, 2010 with a revised resolution of findings pursuant to section 1094.6 of the California Code of Civil Procedure. And that concludes staff's report.
Excuse me, did you have any, the letter from the city of Visalia raised the issue of scenic corridor. Do you have any, is there any information about that?
In the staff report, there is information about the scenic corridor. And the scenic corridor, I believe... The, what the staff report states is that the 2001 general plan background report indicates the subject site is adjacent to scenic or State Route 198, which is a state-eligible scenic highway route. It has not yet completed Caltrans approval.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right. Any questions from staff? Board members, no. This is a public hearing. We'll open the public hearing at this time. Anyone wishing to address this matter, please come forward, give us your name and address. Seeing no one, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for further discussion and/or action.
Chairman?
Yes.
Sheedah? I'd like to point out again with staff's report that unless you have state approval for a scenic highway, you really don't have a scenic highway. We found that out in Three Rivers. So I would suggest if the city of Visalia is concerned about preserving the scenic corridor, that they apply to the state of California for official designation as a scenic highway, scenic corridor. So, and we've had it on the books for many, many years, but no one has followed through and had the state of California designate this as a scenic corridor. So officially, it does not exist in the eyes of the state of California.
Just to comment on that, also, in my, do recall when we had public hearings, or this came before the board in the past, the question about where the scenic highway begins and ends is a factor here. In other words, it might be that 198, it's a scenic highway, would actually have a different location than this particular location, which is in a rather urbanized area, whereas as you move further to the east, then you begin to get into open countryside and the foothill area. Any other comments? Yes, Mr. Cox?
One, you know, we continue to see these change of zone requests or these requests to correct violations. We see them time and time again. I hate to punish this business owner, but the county, I mean, they were required to have the approval from the air board before they could operate, but no license, business license requirement in the county of Tulare had that process been in place. They could have found out at the time, they went to start their operation, that was not appropriate there, and they could have looked for appropriate zoning or appropriately zoned piece of property. So I, I mean, we see these time and time again where folks have operated, in some cases, for years, as these folks have, you know, on improperly zoned property. And there's a complaint, code violation, and then we go through this process. It's very unfortunate that we have to continue to do this way. And I hope we learn from this and put our business license into motion. So I mean, I will, and I tend to agree, I visited the site by way of disclosure, no one was present, but I did go by the site, was not able to drive onto the site because it was locked, but did drive around the area and look at the area. And I would, seeing that it's in such close proximity to the city, tend to agree with some of the recommendations from the city to oppose.
I concur with Supervisor Cox. This is an issue that's been around for a long time, that business licenses are important. There are other... There are other firms that we know of that are operating probably outside the zoning, original intent of the zoning, and if you don't have a business license, a lot of people go into a building assuming that it's an approved use. So I would like for us to revisit the business license aspect.
Two, Mr. Chair. Somebody want to address the issue that's before the board here today? It's not about a business license, it's about whether or not we're going to approve this matter.
Well, and I just would make a comment about this, the site, that there were various concerns that were raised at the public hearing of the Planning Commission, and I think that the plan that is in place adequately addresses those concerns and the fact that there is the potential for scenic highway designation. Actually, the storage is behind an office, so I don't see that that, you know, being a complete eyesore. And I think this business is going to adequately address the various concerns, and so I don't see a problem with approving this actual item that's before us today, because this... I too agree that the business license issue needs to be addressed, but that's not before us today. What's before us is this specific project, and in my opinion, we... This property owner has the right to comply with the various regulations and operate the business on this facility, and we've had a lot of zoning issues, and I think that that will be addressed in the next general plan, but with things being that they are right now, I don't see a problem with approving this today.
But a motion?
I would make the motion that we approve this today.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if you are going to approve it today, we would like you to also make an addition to the resolution of findings and allow us to add language concerning the appeal process. That's not in this resolution of findings. It's under California Code of Civil Procedure 1094.6. We need to tell them the appeal rights. So with that amendment to the resolution, if the board wishes to proceed, you just need a motion in a second.
Okay. So that's your motion?
That would be my motion to include that additional language.
Second.
Please cast your votes. Votes approve, four to one. Supervisor Cox voting in opposition. We'll bring us down to item number five, and this is a public hearing request from the Resource Management Agency to deny the appeal filed by the city of Tulare regarding special use permit number PSP09-005, PZUV number 08-030.
Before we begin this hearing, I would just like to disclose, for the purpose of being completely open, on Thursday, June 10, at 1:30 p.m., I did meet with the several agents from SA Recycling, Rob and Jeff, Steve and Sean. We did discuss the project. However, we did not... I did not visit the site. I took very detailed notes, and I would like to enter those notes into the record. And I would also like to state that my decision that is going to be made today, or potentially if it's delayed, will be based upon the information that's presented at the public hearing and not based on my prior meeting with the folks from SA Recycling. And I've also had conversations with several city staff about this as well, but my decision will be based on what is presented today here at the public hearing. And with that, I'd like to enter my detailed, hand-scratched notes into the record.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and Supervisors. I'm April Hill, a project review planner for county's RMA. City of Tulare has appealed the Planning Commission's approval of SA Recycling's special use permit to allow a solid waste recycling operation and its own variance for up to a 10-foot-high wall, along with the mitigated negative declaration environmental document for the project. Just last week, the applicant informed us of changes in the project involving drainage, and this necessitates changes to the project description and the environmental document. Two options were discussed with the applicant yesterday. Staff recommends encouraging the applicant to withdraw the application for the use permit and submit a new one. The second option was to uphold the appeal filed by the city, set aside the decision of the Planning Commission, and refer the matter back to staff and the Planning Commission for further investigation and action. Staff's prepared with a full presentation, about 55 slides, or to answer any questions.
Before we launch off into that, what was the response from the applicant about your recommendation?
Applicant still prefers the second option, to uphold the appeal. RMA Director prefers the first, which might make it cleaner to start over new, with a new description.
Other questions from staff, from the members of the board?
I would just be curious if this new information... Does this substantially change the scope of the project with this new information to justifiably send them back to start all over?
Substantial is a loaded word in Sequo.
Okay, I'm sorry.
If this does constitute a project description change, you're being asked to approve this on the basis of mitigated negative deck, and so that has a very low threshold for review. And basically, it's a fair argument, you wouldn't be able to look at the evidence saying that there is no, you know, change to the project on this basis. But now what your board may want to do is your board may want to go ahead and open the public hearing and take comments, see if there's any other issues that need to be addressed, and then at the end of that comment, decide whether or not you need to refer this back to the Planning Commission, or if you want to take action on the...
All right. Very good. Before we launch into your lengthy presentation, perhaps we will open the public hearing, allow anyone wishing to address this on this matter to come before us and give us their comments. So I'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to address the board supervisors on this matter, invite to come forward, give us your name and address, and thank you for being here.
Good morning, Chair Worthy and members. Sean Edgar, 1822 21st Street, Sacramento, California. I'm the agent on behalf of applicant SA Recycling, and thank you for the time this morning to address you. I'm a director of regulatory affairs in our firm. I've been working in environmental policy for the last 20 years. I've had the privilege of working on the formation of Cali PA up in Sacramento, and so I'm here to offer just a few comments. First of all, the applicant's preference would be the Sequo process is one of information, and the applicant's consistently supplied information to staff that they've been processing into the environmental document to suggest that we should go back to the starting block and begin forward what's been a two-year process is not our preference at this time. The applicant's more than willing to take a timeout of a short duration in order to improve, in order to improve the disclosure about the facility, but I think what you'll hear from staff's presentation, very lengthy, they've... Staff has not found any reason to uphold all of the conditions that have been satisfied with regard to mitigated negative deck that was circulated. That having been said, on the applicant's perspective, we're willing to take a timeout to improve the quality and the information disclosure, if that's what the board would direct.
If I might, when you say take a timeout, would that be the second option of having referred back to the Planning Commission for the Planning Commission to review this, the proposed changes? And then we can back before the board?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
And I'd be happy to take this time if you'd like. Either staff could continue. As a statewide policy expert, there are three items that I would address, and that would be the linkage of this facility to federal, state, and local programs, or the importance of this facility in Tulare County. The second thing I would address is what is and what is not a solid waste facility, because I think there was some confusion about the site operations. So we have the applicant's representatives, the compliance director is prepared to speak to what the facility is and is not. And then, third of all, on the point, some of the points that were raised by the city of Tulare, the general counsel for SA Recycling is also here. So at the direction of the chair, we can choose to... We have a brief slide presentation that we'd like to present, if you'd like to hear that now, or at your direction.
I think based upon your comments today, I'd like to... We'll hold that in advance. If we decide to go forward, then we'll give you that opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please, come forward.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Jenner, for the city of Tulare. Mr. Chair, county council?
I was delighted to hear Mr. Cox raise an issue about businesses that operate illegally over a period of years and then decide to attempt to come into compliance by having zoning changes. And that's exactly what we have going on here. SA Recycling is operating in an M1 zone. That is light manufacturing. Light manufacturing does not include auto wrecking and crushing vehicles.
May I interrupt just a moment? I think you're getting kind of to the substance of this matter, and I think right now I'm kind of focusing on the procedure. The applicant's indicated that they are willing to have this matter referred back to the Planning Commission for their review based upon some changes that have been made to the project, and I wonder if you might address that issue from your perspective, from the city of Tulare, that procedural issue? Because I... My thought is, I really hate to go through a very lengthy factual presentation, and then if this matter's going to be referred back to the Planning Commission, come back and go through that same process again. The economies of time would seem to me that that would be not a very good use of our time.
And I fully appreciate that. However, I think a better option is to... Real efficiency would be for you to uphold the city's appeal and deny the permit entirely, because it is inconsistent with your own ordinance. That is what I'm trying to address, and I think you can do that today. It doesn't need to go back to the Planning Commission, because you have the authority and the power to fix this today. That would be the real efficiency. SA Recycling is going to seek another delay so they can continue the illegal operation that they've been doing for four years. They've been out of compliance, they were cited by your own staff for the same reasons that the city has raised concerns about. That citation was later overturned by a staff person who I believe is now retired, and there was no explanation for why that violation was just dropped. It was almost, it appeared as if there was interference with code compliance. And I don't know what that's about, but I believe that you can address the issues on the merits today and uphold the city's appeal and deny their permit entirely.
I don't think there's any question that we have the authority. The question is whether or not this board exercises discretion to something differently. Why don't you hold your comments then for now, because I think that we'll have that discussion here among the board members, and if we decide to go forward, then it'd be appropriate to have your comments.
Very well. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to address this on this matter right now? Again, we will... If we're going to have the substance of this, if you want to address this, we'll give you that opportunity. I really want to focus right now on the process. Seeing no one, we will close the public comment for now and bring it back to the board for... Actually, we'll keep the public comment period open for future comments, but I'd like to address among the board members now this issue of procedure. Any thoughts?
Well, you know, I would just make the comment that, you know, based on a concern raised by the city of Tulare, I would just like to ask SA Recycling if this is really a delay tactic, or if this is really an effort to more thoroughly complete the report that's going to be analyzed here today. I think that's a reasonable question, but...
And we could actually ask perhaps to our staff, because there's been an amendment proposed to this plan, and the issue might be addressed from both directions. Good morning.
Kimball, RMA Planning. This really... This procedural question came up with the recent suggested change into draining. It might be helpful to mention what that change is. It has to do with the drainage of their racks, and previously, they'd been analyzed as to going into a sewer system or a community facility of some sort, and are learning that the intent is to... The applicant wishes not to proceed with that, but to drain it into some sort of tank that would be pumped and disposed of off-site. Now, that could be a minor change. There may or may not be a significant environmental issue involved with that kind of change, but because this is a mitigated negative declaration, every little thing needs to be scrutinized for that, and that's why staff, together with the applicant, recommended we look at this procedurally and possibly go back and redo, amend the environmental document and recirculate it. So it's really up to the applicant what they want to do as far as withdrawing their application or going back, but that's staff's recommendation at this point, so...
Okay. Thank you.
If I can't, how long is this going to take?
If they were to re...
Because we're already into years, is my concern.
Staff doesn't anticipate it would take years. Mitigated negative declaration circulation period is 45 days, or, well, 30 days, we could go 45 days. We like being on the safe side when we're discussing those timeframes and giving thorough and adequate notice period for the public so that everyone feels like they had their fair chance. It would require a little bit of staff work to go back and amend the documents, and that's not going to be a matter of years, so that'd be a matter of days or weeks, tops. And so we're looking at probably a couple months.
You asked for opinions. I was ready to move forward today. It appears if there are going to be recommended changes to that mitigated neg deck, that we might want to allow them time, but not a lot of time. I mean, it's a concern that this has been going on for years, and I've read through the inch-and-a-half thick of stuff here and was prepared. And my concern is if, in the... As staff looks at the mitigated neg deck, there's cases where we give years to fix things or to build things. I'm absolutely not in agreement with that.
Mr. Sheed?
I have a question. How many years has this operation been in existence on this site?
Four years.
Four years? Okay. I would concur with Supervisor Cox that we should send it back, but I can remember as a small child, driving through this section of Tulare, going to the coast, and that section of town has not changed in all this period of time the use of those lands, except for the incursion of new subdivisions that have grown around this property, which did not exist previously. It's just an observation. I did, as a disclosure, drive out and look at the site, and I looked at it from both sides. I did not enter the property or speak to anyone on this, but I would recommend that we go refer it back.
I would concur. Too often, these issues, when you get to judicial review after it gets past this stage, are overturned on procedural matters, and so I think it's important that we not set up a situation which is neither beneficial to the county or to the applicant or the city of Tulare. So I would then entertain a motion to have the matter returned back to Planning Commission for review of the change. I'll let Julia give us the proper language.
Mr. Chair, let me do, give you one other option, and if you're concerned about the length of time this will take, the other thing the board could do is you could retain jurisdiction, send it back to staff to revise, to review and revise the environmental documents as appropriate, then have the matter re-noticed in front of your board, which would leave the appeal pending, but it would then give them the option to redo the environmental review.
I think that might be preferable. Again, it does speed up the process, because it could get to the Planning Commission, be continued there numerous times or whatever, and we are talking about a very specific issue here, and it would seem like that's something that would be appropriate for us to retain jurisdiction over.
And I would suggest re-noticing. That just gives staff a little bit more time to work with the timeframes, but again, it's up to your board. You could set a date specific to come back with this, but that does give them a little bit more time to work through the paperwork and...
I was just going to go ahead and say that I would be in agreement with that, keeping it at our staff level, because we've brought the applicant here. This is the second ti... Or, I don't know, the second time in my tenure, but probably a lot longer since they've been working on this for a couple of years. And it's also, we've brought all city staff, and the city's paying for this, so I just would like to have this issue dealt with in a timely fashion, so I would be... I would definitely agree to propose a date certain for this item to be addressed. So I don't know how much time staff needs, if it's, say, a 30-day period.
They said it would take a 30 to 45 days just to do the notice, re-noticing, so you're going to have at least 60 days.
60 days.
Baking permission. I'd request 75 to 90 days.
Yeah, that probably makes more sense.
Not trying to defer.
Yeah, right.
Just practical matters of getting comments back.
Okay.
So what your motion would be is you'd want to continue the matter for 90 days to a date certain for staff to review and, if necessary, recirculate the mitigated negative deck. deck, and then the appeal would remain pending until then.
And the, the public hearing remains open during that time, and Mr. Ishida wanted to make a comment?
No, that, that, and I just...
And would, is, is it proper to ask if that would be acceptable to both the, I guess, the appellant and the applicant?
I see nodding of heads by the applicants.
From the applicant, how about the City of Tulare?
Discussions.
We would request that they be directed to stop crushing cars in the interim if it's continued for that duration of time, other than that, we would concur.
Well, and, and based on that, I mean, that would have to be, that statement, I, we haven't even gotten into the detail of presentation, and, you know, I, I would just ask the question if the applicant is even crushing cars currently, or for a current description of what their current business is that's being operated at the, at the site, a very brief description if there, if that question, if that point is being raised by the city, I think we need to ask that question.
Through the Chair, Supervisor Vanderpoel, the crushing operation involves compacting, so it takes end-of-life vehicles in support of cash-for-clunkers and other, other programs here in the county. Code enforcement, as an example, it compacts those cars for the efficiency of transport, transport to Bakersfield where, where the cars are reprocessed. So, the operation on-site is actually a compacting of taking the roof and pushing it down, that's done on a frequency of approximately every 30 days. The reason that's done, and, and the acoustical analysis and other things that were done through the sequel process, we'll, we'll talk about the, you know, meeting the county standard for off-site, no, no noise impact, or acceptable off, off-site noise impacts with the compacting. And the reason that's done is because 16, 16 cars can effectively fit on a flatbed, whereas six whole cars could be done. So, the long-winded answer to your short question is approximately 30-day cycle, and it's done with, you know, equipment that has air permits, and it's done with, with an acoustical analysis that staff has already reviewed, reviewed that indicated that the noise impacts are less than significant.
So, basically, over-
I think the question really is, are you crushing cars?
Every 30 days, sir.
Every 30 days.
Every 30 days.
Yes, sir.
Once every 30 days.
Yeah, so, so, so three, three times you'll be prevented from crushing if the board does agree with the city's recommendation.
Sean Edgar.
Yeah, okay, so is there a motion then to continue the matter for, for the 90 days?
Yeah, well, I, I would make the motion that we continue this to a date certain, approximately 90 days from now. Do we have that date?
September 21st.
September 21st. Well, that's the day before my birthday, so that means that I'm going to get an early birthday present then, I guess. So, I would make the motion that we continue it.
Do you want to address this issue of the crushing? I mean, essentially, it's two more times between now and then.
Well, I, I question whether or not we even have the jurisdiction to tell them to, to stop running their business right now, but I, I'm just making the motion we continue it to September 21st, 90 days.
I would second that.
And Mr. Cox?
Before the vote, I would disagree with that, because it appears that they are operating outside the bounds of what the property is owned for, so I would support the idea of discontinuing the crushing between now and September 21st.
However, that's not part of the motion.
That's not part of the motion.
Okay, so, well, I, and I, I'd be willing to, if that's what the board would desire,
I'd be willing to withdraw the motion and amend it to incorporate what Supervisor Cox has suggested. I think it becomes a code compliance issue.
Personally, firstly, my, we're talking about something which is going to happen two, maybe three times in the next 90 days. I have no problem with, personally. Okay, so the motion is, does not, does not address the matter of the crushing?
Nope, doesn't deal with their business operations.
Please cast your votes. Votes unanimous. Matter is continuing for 90 days. What was that date again, Michelle, September?
September 21st.
21st, and the public hearing will remain open. Thank you. That brings us to item number six.
Mr. Chair, I think we have-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I was patiently waiting in the back, because I'm not real familiar with procedure. A question was asked by Mr. Ishida.
Sir, I'm sorry, can you give us your name, please?
My name is Chuck Simonian, and I own a property that comes out of a little corner of SA Recycling. In response to Mr. Ishida's question of how long has this type of operation been at this location, and an answer was blurted out from the audience of four years, that's how long SA Recycling has been there. However, it has been a recycling plant for a number of years, and the landscape hasn't changed in that area in a long time. Just a point of clarification, that it's been a recycling plant for, and I'm, I'm getting a little older now, so, but at least 15, 20 years.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Simonian, appreciate that. And we will continue the hearing until you maybe want to come back and testify further. Thank you.
Yes, I will, thank you.
Thank you. All right, and that will take us to item number six, another public hearing, and a request from the Resource Management Agency to approve an application for the funding from the State Department of Housing and Community Development, 2010, Community Development Block Grant General Allocation. And our crowd has left you, Lori.
I'm okay with that. Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Lori Mercer, Tulare County Redevelopment Agency. Hope this morning finds you all well. The Board of Directors is holding this public hearing to review and receive comments and to solicit input regarding the submittal of the 2010 CDBG Program General Allocation Application and the potential project list for future grant applications. Spanish translation was advertised, however, no one requested these services, and a sign-in sheet is being passed around, signing is voluntary, and only indicates that you had attended the public hearing. Funding for the CDBG program is provided by the State of California Department of Housing and Community Development. The objective of the CDBG program is to develop viable communities by providing safe and decent housing, a suitable living environment, and by expanding economic opportunities, principally for persons of low and moderate income. It is recommended today that the county, that the Tulare County Redevelopment Agency apply for an $800,000 general allocation grant for, grant to provide financing for the Pixley Pedestrian Safety and Air Quality Improvements Project. The proposed project will meet the CDBG national objective of providing benefit to the communities, consist, benefit to communities consisting of at least 51% targeted income group persons. The Pixley, excuse me, the Pixley Project will address the immediate health and safety hazards to pedestrians using Elm Street to access Pixley Schools and other community The lack of sidewalks has created an unsafe pedestrian environment, as well as contributing to the poor air quality within the Central Valley due to cars driving on unpaved surfaces. Given the current economic environment, the CDBG program is highly competitive. In an effort to strengthen the application, it is recommended that local funds be contributed as local leverage. In association with this application, CDBG program income in the amount of $1,000 and up to $120,000 from the Pixley Redevelopment Project area is proposed to be used for the grant activities. The county anticipates submitting applications under one or more of the CDBG notices of funding availability during the program year. The potential project list was provided for review. Recommendations for the project selection are formulated through a collaborative effort with community organizations, engineers, county agencies and divisions, and are based on the need, changes in the funding sources as required by the funding source, and changes in program requirements, including the industry best practices. All known projects are listed in order to take advantage of new funding, to continue to do research for new funding sources, and in an effort to be ready to proceed and to be as ready as possible. All activities will be implemented in ways that are consistent with the county's general plan and further demonstrate the county's commitment to fair housing and equal opportunity. Funding is made available to low and moderate income residents regardless of age, race, color, ancestry, religion, national origin, gender, marital status, sexual preference and/or disability. The purpose of the public hearing is to provide citizens an opportunity to make comments. We have invited citizens to submit written comments to the Resource Management Agency. Public information files are available for citizens to review at RMA as well. Citizens will be advised of program progress on an annual basis at a public hearing scheduled for that purpose, and no one will be displaced as a result of these activities. With continued collaboration, outreach, and support, we will again attempt to have projects list lined up for future funding, start the environmental process where it's feasible, and stay abreast of new funding sources. Thank you for the opportunity to present today. I'm glad to answer any questions, and I look forward to what we all accomplish together.
Thank you, Lori. Mr. Vanderpoel?
I just want to make one comment, Lori. I, I really appreciate coming forward with, you coming forward with this. As the pictures show, there's absolutely a need for sidewalks and for pedestrian access in, in Pixley, especially on Elm Street. This is very, very much needed, and I'm really surprised this chamber's not fold with, or not filled with Pixley residents, especially from the town council, because they're so adamant about this project. And I know that the residents are very excited about this and want this to move forward at a very quick pace, so I'm absolutely supportive of your efforts, and thank you for bringing this forward.
You're welcome. We have received at least 10 letters of support for the applicant.
I knew you'd hear from them.
That's because they're so heavily represented by their representative, they don't have to be here. Mr. Cox?
Very supportive of this nearly three miles of curb-gutter sidewalk, although we continue to spend these type of monies when there's so many opportunities to spend them on other things, brings us back to our development standards, to where it used to be, well, in cities, when you build a house, you build curb-gutter sidewalk along with that, and that has to be in up to the street, in some cases to this, to halfway to the middle of the street before you're allowed to build your property. So, we, I know we're fixing mistakes of the past, which is a good thing and very much needed. Hope as we move forward with the new zoning ordinance, the new general plan, we do not create these types of problems for people in the future. So, I'm very supportive of three miles of curb-gutter sidewalk. I did the math, it's a good price per foot. The contractor and me, it's the first thing I did, how many feet, how much, it was a good price per foot. So, very supportive, but again, let's try not to create these problems for, you know, our, our grandkids that might be sitting up here someday.
Well, just, just if I might respond to that quickly, oftentimes, these are in situations, and it looked to me like that was an existing one, where you have an old situation that's been there for perhaps 50 or 100 years.
Long time.
But the other thing I will tell you, Mr. Cox, is that we dealt with one of these issues that was not by our creation, but was created by a school district, where they choose to go out and build their schools away from urbanized settings, and then were not happy about the fact their children had no place to walk, and they were successful in getting funding. But in that case, it was not because of our development standards, it was not because of development, it was because of the city choosing to locate where they chose to locate. So, it's not just a one-way street in this situation.
I'd like to give a little different perspective, being a ex-member of the Fig Garden, old Fig Garden Housing Association, and Fig Garden area, the reason it is, one of the major reasons it has not been annexed is the fact that the residents do not want sidewalks, curbs, and gutters in their neighborhood, which is over 75 acres, right off of Palm Shaw Avenue. So, there are some people that look at the lack of those amenities as a real plus.
Okay. Wide-ranging discussion here this morning. Yes, Mr. Rousseau?
Yeah, I just wanted to point out if, you know, I met with, with RDA staff regarding our, the list of priorities, and when the board has time, if you can go through, and it's not numbered, but on page 60, it's numbered up to page 59, so page 60 in the staff report goes through some of the, some of the projects that we've discussed in our meeting, at the various different types of CDBG type of, of grants. And you might find of interest, we, we pulled some long-term ideas off, off the plate, and we're, we're trying to focus and coordinate better with our redevelopment project areas, the requests that we've had, and try to focus back on economic development, improvement of the communities. I do have a newfound respect, after going to a few of those meetings, for the, the community's desires for, for sidewalks. It used to be a source of irritation to me, now I embrace it, so, but do take a look. Page 60, 61, actually 60 through probably 65, has a number of good ideas on it, and if you have any suggestions, let us know. Thank you.
Approval. I'll second.
Are we at the public hearing yet?
No.
We'll open the public hearing first. Anyone who wish to address the board on this matter, please come forward at this time. Seeing no public, remove, close public comment and have the motion by Mr. Ishida, seconded by Mr. Vanderpoel. You guys are quick on today. Please cast your votes. Votes are unanimous. Thank you very much, Lori. And that will take us to our untimed items. Number 39, request from the County Administrative Office to approve an agreement with Carpe, Clay, and Smith to provide federal legislative services. Good morning.
Debbie Vaughn, County Administrative Office. I am going to lump 39 and 40 together, and then if you have questions, just let me know. At the direction of the County CAO, your board staff member, Jeff Forbes, initiated in late December of last year, an RFQ process for state and federal lobbyists. Sent that out at the end of December, and in February, a review committee met to review proposals that were received from both the, the state and the federal firms that sent them in. During that meeting, the review committee narrowed it down to three finalists. They made that, those selections based on scoring in five individual areas. And at that point, Mr. Forbes sent out a more detailed request for proposal to the three finalists at both the state and the federal level. Last month, a selection committee met and reviewed those three finalist proposals, and again scored them, and prior to that meeting, two members of the committee conducted telephone interviews with existing clients for all six of the finalists, both the state and the federal, and reported to the group on the results of those interviews. So, as a result of the final selection committees, the recommendations that are made is that the county select Carpe, Clay, and Smith as the federal lobbying firm for a period of one year, and that we retain our incumbent strategic local government services at the state level also for a one-year period. Question?
Are there questions of, Ms. Vaughn?
No question, but I was glad that when, when this was passed around for requests, I was, the one comment I had made was on our lobbyists to supply some type of report to us occasionally, instead of showing up once or twice a year with a verbal report. I know we're all bombarded with information from other lobbyists about how great they are and what they're doing, but haven't seen anything from our own lobbyists about what they're doing. Maybe that gets stuck at a staff level, but I asked to have that passed on to the board, because I'd like to, to see what they're doing on a daily basis, or weekly, or monthly for our behalf. I think staff assured me that they, there, some of those requirements were included, to have some type of written report given to us on an occasional basis, and I have noticed that coming through from our state lobbyists, so very happy to see that.
Both firms have indicated that they are willing to do reporting at whatever level we would like that to occur.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn. The motion, we'll take a motion.
I have a motion to approve both items.
Seconded, Ed. motions are carried unanimously?
I want to point out that there was a reduction in the amount of money that we were paying to our state lobbyists.
Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Good job.
And that concludes our, our general session. Mr. Counsel, we have reason for a closed session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we do have reason for closed session. Items A, B, and Items A, B, and D, though, are pulled and canceled. We do not need those. We still need items C, E, and F as listed on your agenda, and I do not expect any reporting out.
Thank you very much.